Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Reinstein and welcome to the first remote board meeting via Zoom. We have right now 83 people who have joined this Zoom. You're looking at the eight board members and the three administrators who typically sit in front of the dais in Columbia, however, tonight are all sitting in their home. I see all eight board members on on display, so from a roll call perspective, I see all board members in attendance. On March 29th of 2020, this body by resolution adopted the schedule for this meeting. The time, date, and location of this meeting were accurately set forth therein. Provided to all the schools, the PTO presidents, the BHE president posted at the admin building, and the same data copy was emailed to the public library, to Berkeley Heights, the Courier-News, and to the Clark to post at Town Hall. The meeting will also be announced on the district sign at Columbia. This board meeting will be livestreamed on the media platform Zoom that we're all on right now and subsequently posted on GL TV. The discussions and actions of the board, the presentations, the comments from the public will be recorded. This, however, is not an official record of the meeting. The written minutes are still the official record of the meeting. I'm going to ask everybody in their home to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. I have a statement to read to start off the meeting tonight. Over the past few weeks, uncertainty, to say the least, has become a way of life, and we've all been adapting to a new routine for the well-being of ourselves, our families, and our community. I want to take a moment to thank each and every one of you, parents, students, faculty, and staff, for the way in which you have adjusted to all the changes that have been thrown your way. I have lived in this community for over 25 years and have served on the Board of Education for 15 of those years. I have seen more acts of compassion, kindness, helping one another, and learning to be resilient in the past months than I have ever seen before. And the range of do-good activities is quite far-reaching. Children writing positive chalk messages on their driveways, flowers being sent to frontline workers, residents supporting small businesses via the Great American Takeout, food and snack donations collected for hospital workers, our Chinese school donating medical supplies, our town creating a 3-1-1 service to help people, the Communications Committee creating the Berkeley Heights Business Directory, the PAL Feed the First Responders Program to donate food, the Silver Liming Foundation Campaign for Kindness, the Virtual Mask Factory to make masks for frontline medical personnel, and simply people checking in on one another, even if they have to do it through a window. The list goes on and on. On an average day, one can oftentimes find someone who has an issue with either the school, maybe a policy they would like changed, the township, perhaps there's a pothole that hasn't been repaired quick enough on their street, or a local store maybe isn't providing adequate service, or maybe even a neighbor's trash is blowing on your lawn. But you don't hear those now. You don't hear any of those complaints. Now is the time when our community is pulled together to act as one. If you're looking for a name, let's call it BH Strong. I am incredibly proud and know that many of you are too of the way our community is pulled together in a situation that is rapidly evolving. What you are doing to support each other is extraordinary. Let's keep it up until we're on the other side of this virus. On a more practical level, to the entire teaching and support staff, in ways both big and small, your dedication, resourcefulness, and creativity to do everything possible while focusing on the best interests of our students has been visible in countless ways. You overcame an enormous challenge and converted your regular, everyday teaching routines into remote learning basically overnight. With little notice, you transitioned your brick-and-mortar classrooms into virtual learning centers. Your commitment to our students is both appreciated, valued, and recognized. We encourage you to take the time you need at the end of each day and on the weekends to recoup and regroup with your families just as you would under normal situations. Please take care of yourself. We are counting on you. I have spoken with dozens of parents over the past few weeks, and what makes our teachers' performance even more impressive is that we are doing interactive instruction of new material in contrast to what many other school districts do and simply handing out packets or assignments and checking in with students once a week. Just okay is not the Berkeley Heights way. We didn't simply transition to remote learning. Our teachers and support staff were committed to providing the most robust, comprehensive remote learning that we could. They didn't think, what's the least we can do to get through this? But what's the most we can do to educate our students? I saw a recent Facebook post the other day that I thought captured it well. It said, quote, "After two weeks of the new normal and all the negativity out there, our teachers are doing an amazing job of making things seem normal around here. Thank you to all the teachers who I know are putting in countless hours. You guys rock." That post had 339 likes and comments like amazing, couldn't agree more, truly the best, great job, so impressed, awesome, incredible, outstanding, and many comments about how teachers in other districts don't come close to what we are doing. As we all get used to our temporary new needle, fully realizing that we don't know how temporary this will be, finds your own rhythm, it's important that we continue to stay connected to one another. The coming weeks will test our patience even more. More students and adults working side by side at home, kids unable to play with their friends, no organized activities, sporting events, or family nights out at restaurants. I'll close with a huge thank you to everyone. I'm incredibly proud of the care and empathy you're showing to each other. I see pride everywhere in Berkeley Heights. I know that we're managing through this situation, quote, "as best as we can." Be well, stay safe, and please continue your social distancing. Thank you. Let's move on to the rest of the meeting. Can I get a motion for approval of our minutes from March 12?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are now part of our public record. Item number six, Donna, correspondence.
We have several pieces of correspondence on the agenda. We have a letter from Mr. Mack regarding the full-day kindergarten location change. We have four pieces of correspondence regarding the potential calendar change, and we have an email from Mr. Martinez regarding petitions for student loan and mortgage forgiveness.
Great, thanks, Donna. I also want to acknowledge there are additional emails that came to the board after 1:00 or 2:00 today when we put this together. So if you had sent a note, I can assure you that the board members were reading emails well up to the start of this meeting. So if you sent a note and it wasn't here in correspondence, it's only because we went to press with this early this afternoon. With that, I know a lot of people want to hear an update, so I will turn it over to Dr. Varley for her superintendent update. Melissa?
Hi there, everyone. I am making sure I'm not muted, and so today is Autism Awareness Day. That is the reason for the background that I have behind me, and I'm also wearing a blue shirt, which you probably can't tell. So I wanted to support and recognize the Day of Autism Awareness Day. We are so very proud of our staff members for the way that they have embraced remote learning. I want to make a few announcements prior to handing it off to Mr. McKinney to discuss the remote learning process and how it's going. We know our teachers are going strong and working hard, and I'm so proud and so very amazed. Just a few months ago, we were worried about tainted remain lettuce. Recently, our worries have increased dramatically. I realize everyone is very passionate about our schools, from the children, the staff, the board, and our parents. While some may be focused on a particular grade or school, I'm focused on all grades, pre-k through 12, as well as all staff members, my teachers, administrators, support staff, et cetera, and they're all doing an excellent job. We are trying to make the best out of an unprecedented situation, and I am in regular contact with them, reminding them to take care of themselves and their families. As regarding the spring break survey, I sent out two surveys on Monday. One went to staff members and one went to families. The families responded at an 80% majority of continuing our remote learning through spring break. The staff members were at a 60% majority to continue through spring break. Of the families, 54.7% wanted to end the school year early and 31.3% wanted the Fridays off for the six-weeks option. The staff members voted at 39.7% to end the school year early, while 23.4% voted for the Fridays off for six weeks. Ultimately, the decision rests with the Board of Education, and they will discuss and vote tonight. As far as some really good news, the educators of the year, I sent out a video this past week, and I do want to recognize them here. From Mary Kay McMillan, we have Carol Scales. From Mountain Park Elementary, Stacy Saravee. From Thomas P. Hughes, Jennifer Fisher. Woodruff Elementary School, Stephanie Parrott. Columbia Middle School, Steve Boonespina. Governor Livingston High School, Mr. Robert Seeger. Regarding kindergarten, our full-day kindergarten pilot program did not have as many registrants as we had hoped, and our half-day kindergarten program also did not have a large number of registrants. We are approximately at 85 students for our kindergarten program, which is a very low number for Berkeley Heights. Therefore, we have room at Mary Kay McMillan to hold our full-day kindergarten program. We will hold one classroom, a full-day kindergarten with a max of 23 students. There will be two full-time teachers in the classroom. Courtesy busing will also be offered to those families due to the last-minute change. While we will be working on a solution to determine whether either our buses or another bus company can drop off students to local daycare facilities after school ends. AP testing? If your child was planning on taking an AP test, you probably received an email from the administration at Governor Livingston. If you didn't, please email Assistant Principal Tara Olivera. The AP test is being shortened to an online 45-minute version. If you would like a refund on your payment, you'll need to fill out the survey sent out by the GL administration. NJSLA testing has been canceled. In fun, exciting news, some college acceptances are coming through for our GL seniors. We have students who have been accepted at these fine colleges. Columbia University, University of Pennsylvania, Cornell, University of Chicago, University of California Berkeley, Duke University, UCLA, University of Southern California, New York University, Boston College, University of Virginia, University of Michigan, Williams College, and Villanova. I do want to reiterate how very proud of our teachers, students, families, administration, and tech team that I am. Everyone is doing such an excellent job, and I'm beyond impressed. I will now turn it over to Mr. McKinney so that he can discuss remote learning.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to start by echoing the gratitude of Dr. Varley and Mr. Reinstein. Our teachers really have jumped in with both feet and worked incredibly hard to make this launch as successful as possible. They are working home with all that that entails. They are maintaining their homes and caring for family members, and they are working to keep our students safe and keep them learning. The same thanks has to go to our school community and all of our families. You are also dealing with this reality in your homes, and you're finding a way to work with our staff to keep the students learning. We thank you for your feedback, your suggestions that you provided at every level. It's been extremely helpful and allowed us to remain flexible in our approach. We encourage you to keep these lines of communication open. This partnership is critical to maintaining the positive momentum during the most challenging times. As we've said from the beginning, this is less than an ideal situation, and we know that it's not the same as being together in our classrooms. But I do know that our students are working with their teachers, and I do know that they are learning. We told our teachers we did a great job transitioning to this platform. Now we will transition within it. We are getting better at this on a daily basis. Just some things that I remind us, things that we all need to remember. We know that this has been new and likely challenging for everybody. Each home is unique, and every family is faced with different circumstances. What works for some may not work for others. This is the primary reason that we are encouraging and will continue to work to provide a blended learning environment for our students. That said, it's our goal to also maintain the routines and classroom connections while at home so that we can keep everyone engaged and provide opportunity in a variety of formats to meet the needs of all of our different learners. As we enter the final marking period and trimester of our school year and are extending this remote learning, we've been working with the district leadership and our staff members to make sure that we make as much progress considering our current circumstances. In the areas of curriculum and instruction, each department and course is developing goals and targets for making progress through our district curriculum. Remote learning classroom instruction will focus on the creation of student learning objectives that support these curricular goals that we've all agreed upon. Another big question that we've been faced is grading and how will our students be assessed in this remote learning environment? And as it is our goal to continue progress towards the completion of our curriculum, it is important that we use the tool of assessment to provide students with feedback and measure their progress. Each building and content area in collaboration with their supervisor and principal will create a balanced and consistent approach to assessing our students. Teachers are encouraged to remain flexible with submission timelines to accommodate family circumstances during these times. Teachers are also reminded to consider the length and scope of these assessments as to not overwhelm our students with too much work in any one subject. Teachers are required to collaborate with their co-teachers and ensure every effort is made to provide students with the accommodations that are contained within their IEP or 504 plans. And consistent with our normal everyday practice, teachers should be providing feedback to students on a regular, timely, and consistent basis. Finally, grades should be and will be entered into Power School in a timely manner so that our students are aware of their progress. Finally, I know that there have been some questions about final exams and what they will look like in remote learning environment, and I will tell you that because there is so much unknown, we are continuing to work on that. Discussions are taking place. It is clear that these assessments will have to be modified in some way based upon the instruction that students were provided. But until we know more about the end of the school year, we will continue to work on that and communicate that as we move forward. As I conclude, I just ask that you be patient in your communication with your child's teachers. While everyone has access to the remote learning platform 24/7, our teachers are not working in the evenings, scheduled days off, or the weekends. We strongly encourage them to maintain a balance between work and home, and we encourage our students and families to really try to do the same. Finally, remember, we're all in this together. I'm so proud to be a part of the Berkeley Heights community. They always rise to the occasion, and this time will be no different. Thank you for all your hard work.
Great, thanks, Scott. We're going to have a slightly different student representative tonight. We have our two GL student representatives who are going to talk a minute or so about their experience from remote learning. We also have a Columbia student. So Mike, if you can promote Alex Janiak and Alex, if you can then just share your experience.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, Alex. Go right ahead.
All right. I definitely think remote learning is a little large change for both students and teachers. We all had to learn how to use Zoom and only had a few days to adjust to a different environment. Some teachers have had to remake or change their lessons to work up online learning. Some teachers have also had to manage Zoom calls and their children. But despite all that, remote learning has definitely been productive and is going great.
Great, thanks, Alex. Much appreciated. Emily Haynes, I know you're out there too. Mike, if you can promote Emily?
Hello. I don't know if you guys can see me. Okay. So some of the students are taking the transition of this very well, and others are reluctant to the change from face-to-face, from not as structured learning. However, I believe the teachers are adapting well with the good class structures and having a sign-in and check-out every class, as well as this Zoom gives us the one-on-one learning that we miss coming out of school. Zoom also gives us the unique opportunity for us to split into smaller groups to work with each other, which gives us better communication with students and teachers. It's definitely a major difference from school and being home all the time, but the students who really focus and follow the directions benefit well and give them more time to focus on homework and time with themselves after school. However, lots of students, as much as they love being home, the environment of school, from teachers to their friends at lunch, but during this trying time, everybody's trying their best to keep their spirits high. In personal opinion, some classes are working better than others, but it's very hard to have material that is as challenging as it was in school, being home and not having that one-on-one teacher-student monitoring. But other than that, I think it's doing well for now.
Hey, Emily, it's Doug. Thanks very much. Talk a little bit, maybe make a comment about how you're socializing in this new, strange world that you're in.
Yeah, so for me, I know a lot of FaceTiming that's for me. I know I'm trying to stay home as much as possible. The stores, like when we go shopping, that's like my favorite part of the week because I get to get out of the house. But other than that, it's just a lot of FaceTiming, texting my friends, and when we get to Zoom in class, I like that because then I can get that one-on-one experience with my classmates that I miss out of school. But it's definitely getting my family more close and less time with my friends, which over time, it'll be a little strenuous, like getting longer and longer into this quarantine. But we're getting used to it and finding new ways to keep social and talking to everybody. So I think we're adapting well.
Great, thanks, Emily. We're also fortunate enough tonight to have a Columbia student. Elizabeth, are you there?
Yes.
Great, Elizabeth. Same thing. Can you just share your experience? What has the remote learning experience been like for you?
It's been very well so far. I think that the Zooms are really helpful because it's more interactive, and I can tell that the teachers are working hard to get the classmates to talk about how they're doing in times when we're not actually doing classwork. Like after school, they'll make Zooms so that we can talk about it. But school has been going well, and I can tell that the teachers are working hard to make it easier for us with the Zooms and having like math spaces really helpful and having Google Docs where we can share with our teacher and they can comment on it.
Great, and same question for you. How about socially? How are you adjusting to socially interacting in a whole different way?
Me and my friends, we have a group chat where we text and we have different things we do each day so that we stay talking to each other and we stay close.
Great. Elizabeth, thanks very much for joining us tonight. The next person speaking is Frank Geiger. Mike, can you promote Frank?
Good evening, everyone.
And Frank, can you turn on your video so we can see you?
I think I can do that. I thought I did that, actually.
So as Frank is doing that, one of the reasons I asked Frank to join us tonight is, as many of you know, Frank is now hosting a video every night called "Geiger's Garage", and Frank challenged himself to learn something new, just like he challenges students to learn something new. And Frank is posting and sharing a video about, mostly about, a passion of his, which he'll talk about. And he's also included something personal, which I'll let him share as well. I can see you're on, Frank, but I can't see your face yet.
It's not showing up?
No.
I'm sorry.
Mike, is there anything you need?
There he is. There you are.
Frank, go right ahead.
Okay, so welcome to my garage. I knew it was a board meeting tonight, so I brought a board. So I've had a pretty good experience with this, and I've had... I was trying to relate to the students who were heading out into the world to learn something new digitally, and I thought, what can I possibly do to sympathize with them? And at the same time, perhaps make a connection with my own kids who are not... Obviously, we are not able to, you know, touch, hold, and hug. So I started talking to the students through this thing called YouTube, and lo and behold, quite a few responded, and it's been a journey, to say the least. And I will say that my goal really was to do a video on occasion, and about a week and a half ago, I was very tired at the end of the day. I will tell you, from the professional standpoint, sitting in front of the screen all day long, helping teachers and getting things moving along is quite a day. But so that night, I was actually going to make a decision on whether I was going to continue or not when I got a wonderful email from a parent who said that they sit around the table at night and they watch Mr. Geiger's Garage, and, you know, they reminisce a little bit about being face-to-face with me in the cafeteria and things like that. And that really did propel me to decide, okay, I'm in this for the long haul, and I'm just going to keep doing it. One night in particular, it did take me three hours to get the darn thing done, but it is what it is, and my wife has become more and more tolerant because I keep sharing the emails with her that are promoting this thing. You know, the parents do make a comment from time to time. But one of the great things I've been able to do is, when I get an email from a parent, I erase the parent's name, I delete the person who was being promoted. You know, if they want to talk about a particular teacher in the building, and I've been sending those notices to everybody in the building, and that has really bullied the entire staff and just made everybody, you know, all for one and one for all kind of a thing. So, you know, whatever we can do, and I know I've heard from other teachers. I had a teacher on the show, yes, it's now called "The Show". I had a teacher on the show the other night from Hughes School, and she shared with me that Mrs. Nardi is sending videos to her. So I think, you know, this is unique because I love doing work in the garage, and it's a, you know, a very kind of a contemplative space for me here. But I think all the principals and all the admin, one way or another, are... Whatever they can do to promote and, you know, keep the momentum going, I know they're all working hard to try to do that. And, you know, we started out as a sprint. We're going to end here with a marathon situation. But I think overall, I couldn't be more proud of what I'm seeing from top to bottom. And what folks don't see are the people behind the scenes that are still concerned, working, you know, promoting the behind-the-scenes aides and school psychologists and, you know... Just the only work I don't see right now is the custodian work, but everything else, I can tell you, is full steam ahead, promoting the fact that students like Elizabeth, who is a wonderful, wonderful example of a middle school student, just gets everything she needs, and, you know, we keep her moving forward as best we can.
Great, thanks. Frank, thanks very much. I've watched a number of your episodes, and I really thank you, applaud you for your leadership, for stepping up, learning something new, and demonstrating by example how to get through this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move.
Frank, it is a big hit in our house also. We do watch it as a family many nights, and actually, someone mentioned that it's almost like listening to Mr. Rogers a year ago. And one now said, well, he kind of looks like him. So we have our own Mr. Rogers in Berkeley Heights.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Kirsch.
Put it in.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirsch. I know that your granddaughter tried to win an prize, a little door prize, to guess when my granddaughter would walk, and I am happy to say she is walking, and we do have a winner, but that won't come out until tomorrow. It's been a lot of fun. Been a lot of fun.
Great, thanks again, Frank. Board members, does anybody have any liaison reports for tonight? Jerry, you just need to unmute Jer first. Jerry, one more time to unmute.
I'm not muted. Can you hear me?
Now you're good.
Okay, good. It's more, I guess, from Melissa or Scott. How are the primary grades doing? Because obviously, they're less proficient with technology. How are they doing?
So I'll jump in and then I'll let Scott talk because I know he's met with some of the principals more recently than I have. But I know I'm getting emails from parents regarding our... From all three different schools, talking about the wonderful work our teachers are doing in the primaries as well. We do know, you know, we have some kindergarten students and some pre-k, which is a little trickier, but our teachers are going above and beyond to make sure they reach out to those and do small groups. I know I received a schedule of small group instruction that's going on at Mary Kay. So Scott, you want to jump in and talk about what you know?
It's really been amazing, especially, you know, it's been a little bit easier at the 2-5 level with the students and them having Chromebooks with them. I know that that Friday before we closed, there was a lot of crash course on making sure we could log into everything together, and it's just been a fantastic experience. And, you know, the students are really embracing the change. They'd like to be able to see their teachers and connect even for a small little bit each morning or to hear, you know, to read a book together or to enter. or to enter, you know, one a a side chat, just so that they can catch up with their friends. So the social part has been exceptional as well. Um and again, we've done a great job. And and we thought it was going to be two weeks and now, again, we're transitioning to a more long-term perspective. But I I just can't say enough, you know, about how amazing it is for people that haven't done this to really not only learn it themselves, but able to work with the elementary students and 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 make them feel comfortable using it and working with their teachers. It's been excellent.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Melissa, and thanks Scott. Uh moving on to liaison reports, do any board members have liaison reports for tonight?
Yeah, um from the negotiation committee, uh yeah, on our agenda tonight, we are going to approve the MOA with the BHAA. That's the Administrators Association. Um it like the uh like the revised deal we did with the teachers is going to be a four-year um four-year contract and uh and we're thrilled to have that done now.
Great, thanks Bill. Are there any other board members with liaison reports?
No, but I do have a question uh for Scott. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to uh ask a question about how our technology platform and our connections are holding up. I haven't heard anything uh to the contrary, so I'm assuming that that is going fairly well for us. Is that a good assumption?
Yes, uh Mike and his team have done a a great job uh with helping uh parents remotely and and helping, you know, our students log on successfully. As far as our platforms and everything operating, we're full steam ahead. Uh it's it's really been pretty seamless, uh very, very routine, a little bit harder too and a little bit longer. Relatively longer time because we can't physically touch uh the equipment, uh but we're able to successfully navigate that. So it's going very well. Mike's team uh has been incredible.
And also, I know we had spoken uh earlier about, even though we're very fortunate as a community, we do have some families who did not have connections in there at 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 home. So I'm assuming that, you know, we were able to get all of that um put in place for those families.
Um yes, we've we've worked with the principals to identify. That's something we continue to do, to monitor, to make sure that we're engaged and uh connected with our students. And, you know, we've put some safety nets in place to uh to help if we are finding that we're losing contact with any of those students. Uh so we are, we're very uh carefully monitoring that so that we make sure that uh we don't lose any students through the cracks.
Thanks, Scott.
Go ahead, Helen.
Helen, I think you're muted.
Yeah, good.
All right, um we'll come Helen, we'll come back to you and uh we'll come back to you uh in a in a minute. Donna, can you give a facilities update?
Sure. Um the work on the GL Media Center HVAC replacement is continuing. Um by the end of next week, all the wiring ductwork and VAV box installation will be complete. The final step will be the installation of the unit and the associated connections. Uh in accordance with the guideline, the COB ID nineteen guidelines, all school fields are closed. And the custodians are working reduced hours and staggered schedules. They're maintaining their social distance and focusing on outside work and maintenance projects.
Great, thanks Donna. Um Helen, did we get you back on? Uh you're not, your microphone is not muted, but we couldn't hear you before, Helen.
Okay, I just said I would like to leave my reports for this evening. And I do have two kids here, you know, working on their class. And we have not experienced any problems with the technology.
Great, great, thanks.
Doug.
Go ahead, Angela.
I just also wanted to make a comment. Um the the remote learning is in my my home. I have a junior and a freshman and they have got involved. They, the teachers have been really, really great. The communication, the the work, the structure, um I was very surprised that it really worked so well. And uh it's working very well. So I just want to give a shout out to the teachers and to the administration for doing, stepping in so quickly and doing such a great job.
Great, thanks Angela. Um what I'd like to do next, uh so I set everybody's expectation. I know a a number of people uh who are on the call tonight are interested about the discussion about uh what we're going to do about spring break and the calendar. So what we're going to do is the board members over the next couple of minutes or so are going to talk about uh their thoughts about that uh and uh based on the feedback, based on the educational impact. Um and of course, the survey. Uh so you'll get a sense of how the board is feeling about that. I'm going to ask Bill Casano to speak first. After the public has a chance to hear how the board is feeling, we are then going to open up uh the meeting to our citizens' hearing. Uh and then uh the public, well, as many people from the public who want to either ask a question or make a comment, they can. We will then close that portion of the meeting. And then when we go into the agenda, the first agenda item will be the actual vote on that. Uh so again, the board will will discuss in public first, then we'll have the uh citizens be able to ask questions or make a comment. And then the board will vote on that in the administrative items. Uh so Bill, if I could ask you to start on your thoughts about uh the spring break calendar?
Sure. Um you know, just despite uh my opinion that the 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 um the effort that the teachers and the administrators have put in has been absolutely Herculean, you know, I do not believe that this remote learning is a good substitute for in-classroom learning. And um while we still harbor some hope that we're going to be back in the classrooms before the year's out, um I would not want to run the risk of trading e-learning days for in-session days or in-class days. And um you know, as a result, I'm not, I don't like the uh the alternative that um that shortens the school year. Um you know, I uh I I would have, I would have not thought that um canceling spring break was the best idea. But but, you know, having seen the survey, um I guess I uh I'll go with the survey um from that perspective. But I feel pretty strongly that the option that we should um that we should take is the the uh the shortened weeks, um giving the Fridays off because, you know, my understanding is that will only take us, you know, one of those days will will obviously be the uh the the Friday of spring break. Um and uh and and the others will only take us through, I think, mid-May. I think it's unlikely that we're back in the classrooms before mid-May and 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 if we are, um you know, we we would be trading one day. Um and you know, if 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 I were convinced that we weren't going back until um, you know, until September, um I would feel differently about it. But um but given that there's some possibility that we're going to be back into in the classrooms, um I'd be very hesitant to um to shorten the uh the school year. I also, you know, I know all of us have gotten um a lot of emails about um about uh activities that happen towards the end of the year and concerns, especially with regard to the uh the seniors. And I'm sympathetic to that. I think that's important. Um but I don't think that's my main driver for opposing um shortening the school year. It's really uh the prospect of having the kids in the classroom as opposed to um learning, you know, half-day remotely as opposed to full day in the room, in the room.
Great, uh uh Bill, thanks very much. Uh Mike DeQuille, your thoughts?
Yes, uh very similar to what Bill was saying. Um I I agree with the looking at postponing of spring break, not shortening the school year and looking at the alternative idea of the, you know, Fridays off or whatever we need to do. Once we get some more information and direction from the state, you know, as everyone said, you know, the only thing we can know is right now is uh they extended the uh recommendation through April thirtieth. What's happening after that, we don't know. But I agree, uh substituting or having a more in-class training or going back to in-classroom. You know, again, my, as a father of first grade, fourth or fifth grade, you can definitely see uh online learning is great. It's providing great education to them. But it's also can see the missing of the actual person. So if there is an opportunity to get back at the school and back at the classroom, I would that rather say with that.
Great, thanks Mike. Jerry, your thoughts?
Uh yes, I mean, um initially, I didn't really have a preference and I I told that to Doug. Um but in reading the correspondence we uh received and thinking about it, I do feel like uh Bill and Mike, that shortening the year might be problematic. And also could impact a lot of the things the students have looked forward to as the as they wind up as uh moving on eighth graders or seniors. Now, I know you could say, well, they could do it a week earlier, but there's been a lot of plans by families. And I know somebody brought up to us in a correspondence about camps, when camps would start and all. I just think it would be much more prudent on our part to uh look at the alternative of the Fridays off. Um obviously, I support um being open for the spring break.
Great. Um thanks, Jerry. Chris, anything else you want to add to that?
No, I I echo all of that and uh I am not in favor of a short school year. No one knows when we'll go back, but I'm not ready to give up on that possibility for uh the reasons that uh Bill shared. I do think this is very hard on our seniors and I think um educationally, there's a good uh case to be made for let's wait and see and hopefully we can get back in the classroom. But I also think there's an emotional component. And um my fingers are crossed that, you know, maybe we can salvage some sense of normalcy uh as graduating seniors. So um I think the uh Friday alternative is a good compromise and um I am not in favor of uh shortening the school year.
Great, thanks Chris. Dante, your thoughts?
Yeah, I I'm not in favor of a shortened school year for the 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 reasons mentioned. I also think for those students in transitional years, whether it's the the twelfth grade, the eighth grade or the grammar school kid, you know, there is, there is a need for some uh social and emotional uh position in as far as just closure on the year, closure with their friends. Um and then on top of that, I think if we do do get back into the classroom mid-May, there may be an opportunity for some of those other activities. Uh maybe uh some baseball scrimmages or some track or some lacrosse. And all those things bring us back to a little normalcy in the classroom, like with it, within the educational um environment. But I think Bill hit the nail on the head. The biggest piece of this is really the teacher-student interaction that uh the virtual uh learning, you know, doesn't grant you. So I I'm not in favor of a shortened school year.
Great, Dante, thanks. Angela, any other thoughts you'd like to add?
Um pretty much echo everything that the rest of the board has said. Uh I'm not in favor either of shortening it. I think it's imperative that if we have an opportunity for the seniors uh and also the other, the eighth graders, because there's a lot of rewards and a lot of um events that happen and occur uh during, towards the end of the year in June particularly. And if we can get back to some sense of, give them some sense of normalcy for them again, um because we don't really know what's going to happen. I definitely think that that's something we need to consider strongly for them. So I am not in favor of shortening the school break, the school year either.
Great, thanks. And Helen, I'll come around to you next. Your thoughts? Uh Helen, you're on mute right now. You got to unmute yourself.
Okay. Um I do appreciate the uh reason people like the year ending the school year early. But educationally speaking, and I think it's just great for the kids to get back into school if we possibly can. Um at the high school and the middle school, they initiated a program on Fridays where instead of being on the computer all day, they have activities scheduled. And if we could, you know, just give parents some ideas to focus on, hey, this is what we're going to do today. Whether it's a scavenger hunt or some other very unique ideas that the teachers have come up with. I think it gives the kids a focus for the day. And parents that are working from home and
Helen, we're having a little difficulty at the end of your comments, but I think we got the the core of it.
That was a pretty cool effect, though, Helen. I think I hope we did it on purpose.
The only thing, only thing I would add to all of this is that, I mean, this is really hard on all of our kids. But I just feel like we have to hold out some hope and um cross those difficult bridge if and when we come to them.
Great, thanks. Let me just add a couple of thoughts. I I concur with what uh the rest of the board members have said. Um I I probably have received the most feedback of anybody um over the past probably ninety-six hours uh in terms of feedback uh about this entire, you know, calendar and spring break. Uh and it comes from a lot of different places. Uh although there is a large portion of um senior parents who are very passionate about this because they see big things like prom and picnic and yearbook and graduation. Uh with uh as a board and with the superintendent, we manage every grade. We don't manage just for seniors. Uh and we'll look at all the grades and all the impacts. And there are impacts across all the grades. They're different. Uh but this is not just about the seniors, even though I I empathize, I understand that the seniors are feeling a great deal of pain. Uh but I can assure you that this is not just about the seniors. Uh the second thing is, I'm also, I'm very aware of the fact that we went out to the audience and asked people, uh the parents, as well as the teachers, and asked them what they thought. Uh and they came back, you know, in a mid-eighty percent from the parents about uh about recommending that we continue through spring break. I have gone back to a a fairly large number of parents, um a couple of dozen, uh since we got the results. And I in- I inquired whether, once they said that they were in support of canceling spring break, did they really have a strong opinion about the early close in June versus the Fridays? And uh of the ones that I asked over the past two days, uh virtually all of them felt that uh they cared very greatly about working through spring break, but almost all of them were indifferent between the two options, meaning the early June quit versus uh the Fridays. Uh so I I don't take lightly the fact that we asked a survey. Uh and in this case, as you've heard, most of the board members uh are uh in support of that's uh the results of that survey with continuing through spring break with uh just a slightly different option. So first of all, board members, thank you. It sounds like we have, you know, a large uh concurrence around this. I'm going to pause right now. We're going to open up the uh meeting to the public. Uh I'm going to ask to do it in two uh phases. We only have one, we only, I'm going to have one public session today. I ask that we start with people who want to ask a question or make a comment about this calendar issue and spring break. Let's uh cycle through all those people who have a comment or a question. After we're done with that, uh there will also be time to ask a question about anything else in the district that you want. But just to make it a little bit more efficient, I'll ask that you do that. If you can raise your hand, use the raise your hand functionality on uh in Zoom. We will see that uh your hand is, your hand is raised and then we will uh call on you. The first person I see.
Doug, Doug, can we just point out that there, i- it looks like there are a hundred and eighty-eight people on this call um outside of the panelists. And um, you know, that's just terrific. And, you know, so I just want to want to give a shout out to the community that, um, you know, we if if we knew, if we knew this was what would happen, we would do these calls virtually a long time ago.
What what Bill's saying is that we don't get a hundred and eighty-eight people who come to Columbia on the third Thursday of of most meetings. So that is a great point, Bill. Thank you for making that. Um uh let's first go to Mia Montero. Mia, I see you have your hand raised. I see Mike is now promoting you. He's going to take you off mute. Uh and you can ask your question or make a comment.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We can hear you, Mia. Thank you.
Great, hi. Um I'm uh loving everything that I'm hearing and I want to thank you guys for uh, I'm a senior at GL. Um and I wanted to thank you guys for considering, uh you know, all grades and specifically our state that we're in um right now. Um I just wanted to speak quickly on behalf of the, if some of you don't know, the Drama Club at GL is the GLHS Hilltop Players. And um we were scheduled to perform a production of Mom and Mia last weekend. Um and there, you know, I know that you mentioned a certain sense of emotional connection to activities. And um this being what would have been my last show before heading off to college to pursue um theater and acting. and this being what would have been my last show before heading off to college to pursue theater and acting, because it's something that I truly love and care about. It was heartbreaking to, you know, hear these things, but I just ask that, you know, in that time, people could have probably, we had the show completely blocked before, right before we were told that we were gonna be out for a certain amount of time. We were actually going into our first full run-through of the show prior to it being canceled. But I just want to reach out and mention that that one week could mean that we could possibly put up our show. And even if we can't have a ton of people collect to actually see it, we would love to perform it for the community because we've worked really very hard, as I'm sure so many other students have. We do have musicians playing in the pit, all that, all that stuff. So we have, we have a lot of students who are participating in it from all grades. And so if we could just have that opportunity to perform for the community, we would really love that. So thank you so much.
Great, Mia. Thank you very much. And we are keenly aware to all of the extracurricular activities, sports, clubs, the play, et cetera. So thank you. The next person I see is Mike Shabel. If we can promote Mike, that'd be great. Mike, I see you're on there and you are unmuted.
Great. Hi, Dr. Shabel here. First of all, I want to congratulate the, all of the teachers and the support of Berkeley High School system. Really fantastic job. We've had, one of our younger students doesn't go to Berkeley Heights and already went through a spring break. So he's a younger fifth grade student and it was not so comfortable because it was unstructured time. And I think actually, as I've observed the rollout of the education with the online education, what we've seen is that that structured time, and I know it's a burden on everybody, is really important for the psyche of these kids, rather than just sitting around where they can't really go out of the house. They can't go do anything. So if you want to really look after the mental capacity of the kids, I would say that the service that you provide with education is so really important and I really truly value the in-class time. But also the time during that spring break is an opportunity for you to continue sort of providing that other service, which is giving them that structure that they so very much need during this, kind of this war that we're all participating in against COVID. So if I can implore you to really think about not seeing that as time off or a miss of the social structure at the end of the year or getting back in the classroom, but rather as an opportunity to really provide a service to these children so they remain structured. I think as a parent, I really, really appreciate that. I think that's a time well spent for their psyche.
Great. Dr. Shabel, thank you very much for your comments. The next person I see is Annie Corley Hand, our principal at Mary Kay McMillan. Welcome. Good evening, Annie. We just need to unmute Annie and then we can hear her.
Maybe she has to do it herself.
Or maybe Annie, maybe you need to, oh, there we go. Now we got you, Annie.
Okay, I'm not sure how I raised my hand, but I didn't. So I'm not going to speak to whether or not we should have spring break or not. I'll leave that up to the public and the teachers. Thank you.
Okay, not a problem.
It was nice hearing from you, though.
The next person I see is Macy Campano. Macy, I see you're coming up on the screen. Michael, unmute you, Macy. We can hear you now.
You got me? You can hear me?
I can.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Macy Campano. I am a senior at Governor Livingston, like Mia. I just wanted, I don't want to speak cyclically or repeat what has already been said because, you know, I really appreciate everything that has been said already. But just as representative of the senior class and speaking on behalf of a lot of my friends that I've spoken to about this, definitely getting the regular end time for school would be really, that's something really important to us because it would give us a chance to, as all has been said before, to really wrap up our year. Obviously, it's a big transition year. And I also wanted to say, as a member of the GL Hilltop Players as well, Mia mentioned to me earlier, not just for the seniors in the show, but we've also, we all have a group chat collectively, the people that are participating in the show, the people in the crew, the people in the pit. All of these people range in age from freshmen to senior. So it's not, you know, just the seniors who are graduating, want to have a final show experience, but everybody has put a lot of work into the show, all ages, and all of them seem to have a similar philosophy on the matter. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, Macy. Thank you very much for sharing that. I see the next person I see is Emily Haynes. Emily, if we can, you're back on, just unmute and then we can hear you.
Yeah.
Hi, Emily.
Hello. So I'm also like being in my position and hearing from juniors and seniors because I have a lot of friends through sports and just regular school. I'm, I don't know if this is true, but I was under the impression, even if we shorten school, that we would still have graduation on the 18th as well as project graduation. I'm not sure if that's how it's going still. But I was, in my opinion, and a lot of my friends who I've talked to, they're like upset with the situation now, but they'd rather get their schooling in because I feel like sitting at home during spring break, not doing anything, will just get them unmotivated and more sick of their houses, rather than doing schoolwork and getting things done. And I totally feel sympathy because I'm on the lacrosse team, so I'm really sad about not having the lacrosse season right now. But I'd rather have more time in home to learn as of now. And then eventually, if it blows over, because we, I have hope that we can go back, but I'm not sure about how it goes on through, through the next couple of months. So we don't even know if we can go back. So I totally understand about the plan, everything happening in high school and everything. But I feel like everybody at home, giving them something to do now, will help the students more, have more time at home to like focus on something, as well as the parents not driving them crazy, having them have nothing to do for their kids all day. And it won't give the students as much downtime to just sit there in their houses, stuck, not being able to go out and hang with their friends and all this stuff. That spring break was really the time to do. So that's just my opinion. Either I support the shortening of school as well as the Fridays off. I just think keeping spring break as it is now is just a hard opinion for all students throughout all the schoolings because it's hard to keep them focused when they're just have nothing to do at home.
Great, thanks, Emily. Thanks for sharing. The next person I see is Lee Popovich.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Lee. Oh, now you're on mute.
Oh.
Now you're back. We can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. So I just have to say, I completely sympathize with our seniors. As someone who's gone through both the senior year of high school and the senior year of college, I've thought quite a bit about all of the kids in our school system and how disappointing it must be to miss out on that final year, that final semester. But I have to say, as now someone who has grown up with children in the school system, I work full-time. I work in Brooklyn. I commute two hours a day each way to work. My husband works full-time out of the house, too. Being home with a five-year-old or a four-year-old, almost five-year-old and a seven-year-old that are so dependent on us to do every piece of their schoolwork. This has caused a stress on our family that I've never seen before. Even though my seven-year-old is in first grade at Mary Kay and she can read, she can't do any of her work on her own. And she spends only 20 minutes a day with her teacher on Zoom. And we love our teacher to death and we know how much they are working and putting towards this. But her teacher doesn't do any of the schoolwork with her. So every single second of the day, I'm going in between trying to teach my four-year-old his letters and working with my seven-year-old on her schoolwork. And also, we feel like we just finally found a bit of a rhythm in the last day or two, after three weeks. And with kids that young to now on Monday, be like, hey, kids, it's a free-for-all. Have fun, enjoy yourselves while my husband and I are trying to work or while we're taking PTO days that are going to be wasted. We don't feel like that's the best thing for our family based on how old our kids are. So the reason we chose to cancel spring break and to shorten the school year is so that we can keep a routine for our children, that they don't lose momentum and so that we end a school year early and, and take that week as our vacation week. So I do completely empathize with everyone else's point of view. But it would be very difficult for us to have a free-for-all next week or in the alternate, have every Friday off for the next few weeks because I can't take every Friday off. My husband can't take every Friday off. So then what does that mean for our children? More screen time, more yelling, more, it just, I find that very difficult for us. And while I would hate for our students to miss out on all of these activities, we have to work. We have to show up. Otherwise, we're risking our jobs and that means a lot to me.
Great, Lee. Thank you very much for sharing. The next person I see is Suzanne Zimmerman. So we're going to promote Suzanne right now. We'll take her off mute. And Suzanne, go right ahead.
Okay, hi. I had sent in a letter previously and I appreciate that you all read it. I want to thank the Board of Education for the comments that I've seen because I had a statement prepared to read. I don't feel I need to read it because I see that a lot of your opinions are along the line of mine. But there are some other things that I've heard since then, so I do feel I have to bring up some of these points. I'm a mother of two seniors and I have a daughter who's a sophomore in college. So I've been through senior year and I've seen the joy that senior year can bring. And I've seen the closure and the, and the, just the real camaraderie that senior year can bring. And I have to be honest with some of the recent comments I just heard. I actually feel that, you know, I understand, I'm a working parent, I'm a working, single parent and as a widow. I understand about having to work and having to keep your job. But I don't understand how five days is in five days. So if you're taking off five days now or five days in June for your vacation, it really is five days off from work. But I'm not saying that spring break should be kept intact. That is my opinion. I do think spring break has a very mental and physical value next week. But I do concede and understand for many parents where the one day a week works better. My goal was to preserve the June 18th and have all the school days in June attended through June 18th. And I think that that is, that is really important. And I have to say that the fact that we've been having this conversation, this meeting, is truly really upsetting because I don't think it needed to come to this kind of, what's become kind of somewhat pitting people against each other and a lot of anxiety for a lot of children, not just my own. You know, when the survey first came out, I did, you know, contact Dr. Varley because I felt it was flawed from the very beginning. Splitting the votes between two days in June 18th just does that and splits the votes when it gives you those options. And not giving ample information for June 11th is explaining what might happen. I mentioned it, nothing was done to clarify it. So I do really believe that people were voting without the full information necessarily or the understanding of the impact. And there are still questions out about when graduation would have been had June 11th been the situation. So I'm very glad to see, you know, that the board has considered all of that. And then the fact that that email went out basically saying this was a done deal and this survey had become a vote was very upsetting. And again, you know, something else that was very stressful that really our children didn't need to go through. Something to remember is that this year's senior class is last year's junior class. And last year's junior class was a class that couldn't start new clubs and couldn't, couldn't go on trips and couldn't do things because there was a labor dispute between the teachers and the Board of Education. That junior class was the class that was at, had students at your meetings in person in tears, saying they felt like they were caught in a bitter divorce between contract issues from the teachers and the Board of Education. It's the same junior class that had the stress of not knowing whether or not their letters of recommendation would be able to be written on time or if they'd be held as a bargaining tool. So these kids have been through that stress last year. And now because of this survey and the way it was sent out and then rescinded and now the way this meeting had to come up, I've gone through a lot more stress that just was really needless. And I know the Board of Education, you guys are volunteers, and I really feel for you and appreciate all you've done for this, but you didn't even need to be in this position and that is quite sad. You know, there's a recent email that went to some GL students from one of the teachers and the teachers themselves. I mean, these teachers are awesome. I know that. And one of the teachers said, you know, whether or not you liked high school, these last few months do represent the end of one journey and the start of another. I am so sorry that you might not experience the closure that comes with the end of high school. And that is exactly what it is. So I'm really sorry that if I'm not sympathetic to somebody's need to go on vacation, but I really feel that you have to, you know, we're all being asked to do things for others. We're all being asked to stay home if you're healthy because this is important. And it is important and it's such an easy thing to do. So really to be, to asking someone to put, you know, the needs of seniors, whatever ages those younger kids are, you're going to wind up one day having them be seniors. And, you know, if, if you were responsible, whether it's someone voting or someone speaking today, you're responsible for those kids losing what could be their last week of senior year. How will you feel at your kid's graduation? You already read is how I think you would feel. You would really just sit there and say, you know, I took this from children when it was unnecessary. The entire world is postponing events or praying to God that these events are going to take place on time. We would be the only community that would, that would go and say, let's, let's bring something closer. I mean, God forbid, the real possibility is if we had ended June 11th and some possibility, the governor said, schools are going to open June 12th. What would we do then? How would we face our children? So again, I want to thank the Board of Education, their volunteers. My father was a vice principal, a principal, and then a Board of Education president. So I know the tireless hours. I know, I know all the work that goes into it and I thank you very much. And I hope that, you know, you vote, as you said earlier, your thoughts were, because I think it's the right thing to do. Even though I wanted spring break, I concede that, you know, whatever gets us to June 18th and splitting up those days on Fridays is what's best for everybody. I think that's a good thing and thank you for your time.
Suzanne, thank you very much. The next person I see is Yvette. If we can promote Yvette and she'll come off mute. And Yvette, floor is yours.
Okay, hi. Thank you, everybody. Yvette Fuller. I'm the mother of a second grader and a fourth grader at Mountain Park. And I want to thank the board for hosting this Zoom meeting. I think it's been great to be able to listen to everybody. I'm just bringing in a different perspective from what I've heard so far. My children are younger. I, like we, work full-time. My husband does as well. We've actually been probably pulling 12 to 15-hour days because we have not been able to just sit our kids in front of the computers and allow them. We have to also be constantly teaching them. One thing that we have going for us is the kids are a bit older, so they can self-entertain. My concern is by shortening the school year, you know, we have vacations already booked for the end of the summer. We have camps booked for the whole summer because, again, we both work full-time. And now by shortening the school year, that's a whole nother week that we now have to figure out. So, you know, whether spring break goes on or not, I just don't think that shortening the school year is going to be a benefit to anybody. And I do appreciate the seniors and giving them that week. But I also appreciate that my kids really want to go back. They want to see their teachers. They want to see their friends and have some normalcy before we now jump into the summer. And one other thing I wanted to mention to the board was there's a chat feature on the Zoom meeting and there's a lot of things being posted there. So I don't know if anyone's keeping up with what's been posted there. Thank you.
Yvette, thank you very much. Yes, and we are looking at the chat window as well. The next person I see is Peyton Hoppeck. Peyton, you're on. You can unmute and then... All right, Peyton, you're on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reinstein. I first just wanted to start by stating, Klayam, and I'm a senior at Governor Livingston. However, if anybody you ask that knew me, they would say I'm the most school-spirited, most passionate person they know. And I firmly try to hold that true. So when taking this whole thought process on the question of whether we need a spring break, whether to shorten school and all of this, I want to look at holistic approach and that started from second grade on. The last week of school, from second grade in Miss Jokice's class all the way up to 11th grade last year, has never been a productive week. In fact, it's probably been the least productive week throughout the year. So to point something out is that I firmly believe that that week is all about sharing it with your friends. And in order to do that, a classroom is not necessarily the place to be. I feel that yes, while it may bring us together one last time as seniors or in any grade level to see your friends one more time, anybody from 11th grade and below will be able to see their friends at least one more time. As seniors, our whole second semester has basically been cut short. We have been at home following the approaches of the governor, the Board of Education and everyone else saying, stay home and stay safe. However, we are losing out on valuable time making memories. And in my perspective, I believe that it is not appropriate to be spending one of the last weeks I will ever have with one of my close, with some of my closest- one of the last weeks I will ever have with one of my close, with some of my closest friends in a classroom, where I will be on my phone, because we are not learning anything educational. As the finals have already taken place, as previously stated, there will be no state testing, and AP exams will have already concluded. To the point of all of the extracurriculars. Right now, Governor Murphy is stating that, upon review, sports may continue into the summer, but obviously that's upon review. However, I believe that everything, including the play, can still go on, even though academics are not taking place in the classroom. I know I wanted to support the play, going to multiple nights with my friends, as that's something I enjoy doing, supporting my classmates. And I feel as if that being with those people that I want to make memories with cannot be sustained in a classroom, where nothing educational is getting done in that last week. That's all. Thank you.
Doug is muted.
Doug, you're on mute.
Doug, you're muted.
Sorry about that, thank you. I see the next one is Andrew Rampal Pino. Andrew, we can hear you now.
Okay. Hi, so I'm actually a student at GL. And I actually feel like it would be in the student's best interest if we move spring break to the end of the year, because this quarantine is still going to be going on next week. And all these kids are going to be stuck in their houses for that entire time, when you could let school out a week early, so they could have time to enjoy with their friends, an extra week where they can spend time with family. And that's been taken away from them if they have spring break next week. I mean, yeah, you could say, "Oh, we could do it on a Zoom call," or something like that, but it's just not the same, the face-to-face interaction. So I feel strongly that we should allow to move spring break to the very end of the year, and let the kids out a year early. That's all.
Great, Andrew, thank you very much. I don't see any other hands being raised. I'll pause for a second. Is there anybody else who's on the Zoom meeting who wants to address the Board about the school calendar topic? Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands. I'm going to pause for a second. Is there anybody who wants to address the Board on any other topic besides the school calendar week? Either an agenda item, or any other topic in the school district? Okay, I'm not seeing any other, oh, I... I see Yvette has another comment, so, Yvette.
I'm sorry. Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
I just had a question about the uniformity of using Zoom, or, you know, teachers doing class videos. I don't see that across the board happening. Some teachers are doing it, and it's fantastic. They're using the Zoom meetings to actually teach. Others, you know, we're getting, "Here's a packet for the day." Is anything being done or discussed about that? Thank you.
Melissa, do you want to answer that?
I will. A lot of our teachers are using Zoom or Google Hangouts, but, you know, some teachers are choosing not to. We are allowing them to do the art of teaching. We supply the science, they do the art. I do know that we are, our tech support team is starting to do mini workshops to help those teachers who are a little more uncomfortable with the Zoom or the Google Hangouts or the videos. We are working with people. It is, it's not across the board, but I'm not sure it's something that we would want to mandate them to change the way they want to teach. We have to remember, this is difficult for them. And some of them have small children at home, some of them don't have the Wi-Fi capabilities. So we just continue to support them and give them the workshops they need to move forward.
You said the art of teaching, but I'm just wondering, handing out just a packet every day, maybe some videos the kids have to watch? I don't see how that is helping, especially with my youngest child.
If you would like to email me separately, we can address this as opposed into a public meeting.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. I see another one from Giovanni Storico. All right, Giovanni, you're on, and you're on mute. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, how's it going? My name's Giovanni Storico. I'm also a student at GL. I'm actually part of the production that's going on right now. I'm part of Mamma Mia. But I disagree with some of the other points that the students were making about going back to school and carrying out the full year. One, I just, I don't think it would be completely sanitary for us to go back and do that last week, say we do somehow pull off a final week, because, well, they're saying that the symptoms can hide in someone's body for an extended period of time, and that's just not safe for all of us to be in that same environment, and all the kids working so closely together in the theater, and, you know, with those hot, bright stage lights. The people are sweating all over the place, and if even one of them is a possible carrier, you're getting everybody sick. And it's not a joke, you know, someone could die like that. Also, someone made the point that the survey was unclear to read. But if that's so, why not just send out another, send out another survey that is more clear to read? Because, you know, I feel like this should be more of a, like a democracy-type of vote, instead of just a select handful of the community. Yeah, that's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Giovanni, thank you very much for your thoughts. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. I'll give one last chance. I see another one. I see a hand raised from Lizette. Lizette will promote you. And you're off mute, and we can hear you now.
Hi, this is just a general comment, looking forward for the Board to consider in starting to plan ahead. This is, obviously, tonight's not the time that we're going to have the answers, but I think that strong consideration needs to be considered of what's going to occur if and when we do transition to returning to school. If it happens during the school year, will it, A, be a gradual return, where everyone comes back at the same time? Or will it be something where maybe, you know, shorter school days during the week? Some days are remote, some days in class, some days, some students come back, some days, some students stay at home and have remote? Just some thoughts out there. Also, you know, depending on, obviously, what's happening, but assuming that we're going to be conservative, and people are still going to be worried about this, and we're going to try to keep any type of contagious, you know, that can happen, are we going to have the classrooms, you know, the seating, more social distancing? Are the, you know, the desks going to be far away from each other? How are the classrooms going to be sanitized after each class? Obviously, these are issues that, until the kids are back at school and we have the green light from the state, we don't have to, you know, have answers right now. But these are just thoughts looking forward. And I think that this is something that the Board needs to start considering. Obviously, there's going to be some direction from the state, but on a local level, we really need to start looking into this. Thank you.
Lizette, thank you for your comments. And a number of the things that you have talked about are some things we've started to think about. But yes, we're obviously going to wait for direction from the state, from the governor first. And then I'm sure we have a number of decisions to make. Obviously, we haven't made any of them yet, but thank you. You brought up a number of points that we will obviously have to address. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. I will pause for one more second before we close the citizens' hearing on this. Okay, not seeing anybody else with their hand raised. I'm going to close the citizens' hearing. I counted about 14 or 15 people who spoke, so to all of you, thank you. You know, some were students, the rest obviously were parents, but thank you for sharing your thoughts and feedback with the Board. We're going to move on to the other parts of the agenda. The first is administration. Can I get a motion for the administration items? Probably need all the, probably need all the Board members to go off of mute right now. So can I get a motion for administration?
Okay, I'll move 12A through E. And this includes the approval of the MOA with the VHAA and the change in the calendar.
Second.
A motion, a second. Let me actually just read what we're about to approve. So, letter E, which is new, says, "It is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that the Board approve the following changes to the 2019-2020 school calendar. Establish April 6, 7, 8, 9 of 2020 as days in which school will be in session via remote learning. Establish Friday, April 10th, as a day in which schools will not be in session. And establish the following Fridays as days in which school will not be in session. Those Fridays are as follows: April 7, 10, and 24th, and May 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd." Is there any other discussion from the Board before we vote on administration?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to say two things. One is, you know, I want to be clear about all the surveys that we do in town. We do those to get information to help the Board make their decision. But the decision falls on the Board to make, and it is not a popular vote. We need to make this decision based on what the best thing for the district is, and what the best thing for the education of the kids is. And that is, that is how we're making this decision right now. So with respect to, you know, let's do, you know, whether we do another survey, or, you know, I think we have a really good feel from this discussion and from the survey where people are. And sometimes we need to make the right decision, as opposed to the popular decision. Here, I think we're doing a reasonably good job of making a decision that works for the vast majority of the people, but maybe not everyone's favorite decision. And in this case, it is impossible to come up with something that's going to please everyone. And while that's not our first priority, we do listen to what people have to say. And I'm pretty confident with the decision that we've made here. You're muted.
Any other comments from the Board? All right, Donna, roll call for administration.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Goya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes, and I'd like to thank the negotiating committee from the VHAA for being so great to work with.
Dr. Chris Anino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes, and I would also like to thank the negotiating committee. I'd also like to thank Dr. Varley, putting out this survey with an enormous amount of feedback coming. I know how many comments and feedback I've got. I know how many comments and feedback she's gotten. And as Bill said, it is impossible to please everybody, but I want to thank her for leadership and helping us come to this decision. Let's move forward with education.
13A.
Second.
Motion, a second. Is there any discussion on education? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Anino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Moving on to personnel.
I'll move personnel A through H.
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley? Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Anino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Moving, business.
Yes, I move item 15, business A through D.
Second. Motion, a second. Is there any discussion? I want to point out that there's an item under 15C that is a resolution that the Board is looking at, has to do with quarterly property tax revenue. And this is a situation, I'll just maybe share a minute its worth of detail. The Assembly has passed a bill. Clearly, different levels of government are looking at the financial situation of individuals, and tax relief is one area that different levels of government are looking at. A bill was passed that would allow municipal governments to provide some level of tax relief. It's unclear how much tax relief, but it's fairly broad, and this has a potential impact to school communities in that tax, obviously, the school district receives its tax revenue from the municipality. It has not passed in the Senate as of yet, but this is a resolution sharing with the state government our concern that whatever is passed to help residents of tax relief, which many people support, that there are some barriers, not barriers, some, maybe some guidelines, some guideposts on this, so there's not an impact to school districts. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley? Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Anino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Finance, 16.
I move items A through D.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Anino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Is there any other business to come before the Board this evening? Not seeing any other business. I want to thank all the Board members for participating tonight via Zoom. We had 200, just slightly over 215 people at the peak of this meeting. I can't thank enough the people who took an hour and a half out of their evening tonight to attend the meeting. Many spoke at that. I suspect on April 28th, which is our next meeting, we will have the exact same format. Obviously, we'll share details in advance of that meeting. But I want to thank everybody for their participation and their energy tonight. We will adjourn the meeting, and we'll be back likely via Zoom at the April 28th evening. Thank you very much, and have a good rest of the night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.